It's important because that question is the end. That question and the answer define the end. And so, the answer or formulating the answer, you must ask yourself, what is it that San Lucia has to be that you want to come home? What would make it that you would say, you know what? I'm gonna give up what I have here. Because we know that you have patriotism. Right? We know that everybody here loves San Lucia, can think of great memories of San Lucia. But what you genuinely don't know, and we're gonna be honest with ourselves, is whether you want to make that step to go back home. And there's some things in the back of your mind that worry you. So imagine that's for you. Imagine us trying to attract tourists to come to San Lucia. That we have to inspire people to be able to want to come to San Lucia. But those people are only coming maybe for a week, maybe for a little bit longer. So it's not that important of a decision. It's important enough that they get to go on vacation once a year. So you have how many choices they can make of different places they could go to. So it means we have to create a destination that can compete, that can convince people to want to come there. We then have investment we need in our country. So what is it we have to make San Lucia in order for them to invest millions of dollars? Because again, any foreigner has the opportunity of investing money anywhere in the world. And here's the most difficult one, one that is obvious, but it's not one that we ask ourselves. What about the San Lusians who are in San Lucia? And we have to ask themselves the question, should I stay? Should I stay? Do I believe that I can develop a future in San Lucia? And I have to say to you that before coming into government and being elected in June of 2016, I think San Lucia was heading in the wrong direction. And I think that a lot of us knew that. And I think the fact that the United Workers' Party won the election by over 10,000 votes, which is the second largest win in the history of San Lucia. Right? So everybody talks about the win of Dr. Kenny Anthony in 1997, 11,000 votes. He won by 10,000 votes. So what did that tell you? Is the message that San Lucia was broken and it was not working, the vast majority of San Lusians agreed with that statement? And the question, what was not working? Well, the fact is, nothing was working. And now that I got into government and we're able to open up the books and investigate matters, it was worse than I thought. So my good friend talked to me about health here. I went to Victoria Hospital. When I went in, the first person I met was the cashier. And underneath her was a box with receipt books. So I said, Rob, dude, that's a lot of business in one day. So she laughed. She goes, no, 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 P. E. That's not one day, that's a lot. How can you receive to that for? She goes, for four months. You come and pick up the receipt books every month. They had young boys that were typing in information. So they had the registration cards and they were typing in the information. So what are you doing? So we're data entry. So when I looked at the information they have, all the information is the information on your ID card less one thing, which is your ID number for getting into the hospital. So what does it mean? It means a barcode reader zip. And the information's there. We got two guys typing the information. I went to meet a lady who was running the blood bank. And she had an old computer on her desk. I said, how could they not come and change this computer? She goes, well, they can't change it. I said, why can't they change it? She said, because it's written in DOS. In DOS? Yeah? So you remember the old floppy disk? That's old. And everywhere you went, you saw these kinds of problems. But here's the one that worried me the most. And every day if you go to Victoria Hospital, you could go somewhere and you can see this play out in front of your very eyes. That somebody comes in and they need an ICU bed or they need a defibrillator or they could go on dialysis. And the nurses and the doctors have to huddle in the corner and make a decision as to who is going to get the machine. Because there isn't enough. Alright, so that's why sadly I call Victoria San Pegasus. Because every day when somebody goes, there's somebody has to make a decision about life and death. So if you're an older person and there's a younger person who needs it, maybe the younger person's gonna get the nod. If you're too weak and there's somebody who's a bit stronger, that person's gonna get it. And the calamity is to have to put anybody in a position to make that decision. Forty-four thousand people a year go through Victoria Hospital. Forty-four thousand. There's the proper bus stop. The waiting room is a mess. That didn't happen today. That's how things were running. And the fact is, as a society, many of us have become numb and had accepted that. Maybe we were angry, we became angry when a loved one died or a loved one was not taken care of. I remember my Auntie, I think it was 1977 or something, my aunt went in. All she needed was a bib to get some fluids. And because the doctor who was supposed to be on call was not there and the nurse was not entitled to give it to her, by the time they found the doctor, she died. Which was 55 years ago. And she knew what she needed. When you look at the healthcare system, everybody is all of a sudden opening up St. Jude's or moving into OKEU is in their minds the solution to the problem. But it's not. It's part of the solution. So when we go into OKEU, and these are decisions that were made before my administration came in, and I would say to you that if in fact we were participating in the process, we probably would have made the same decisions. Victoria Hospital has 170 beds. And OKEU Hospital is gonna have 125. So when they made that decision, the decision was made on the assumption that we were gonna fix up the primary healthcare services. So there's 34 health centers around San Lucia. So what do we mean by fixing them up? We were gonna make them more usable, put more equipment in them to the point that if in fact you have an emergency, the first place that you would feel comfortable going to would be the health center. But what was happening, because the health centers were not working, the first place that people went to was the Victoria. And because everybody was arriving there for emergencies, they couldn't handle them in emergency centers. So what they were doing was admitting people who didn't necessarily need to be admitted. And that was occupying a bed. So the healthcare centers were critical to the solution of healthcare. When I came in in 2016, none of the healthcare centers had been fixed up. No money had been allocated to fix up the healthcare centers. None. So we're currently spending almost 80 million EC dollars on making the healthcare centers what we call smart. So they have their own generator, they have new eco-friendly air conditioners, they have solar panels, painting them up, put security. So in Gerisso as an example in my constituency, the healthcare center kept on being broken into. So there's two nurses there. So when one nurse was out to the constituency to educate people and check on the elderly, the other lady was not safe to use the station by herself. So what did she do? She closed it. So we got them going to fence it, put up cameras. We got a little hut and built a house there so that some of the action now lives on the property to be able to protect it. And we didn't have enough facilities, so Soufira, which has been in base the second city. For years now, people have lost the ability of saying their child was born in Soufira. So they'd have to get born in Dufour or they'd have to get born in Caspice. We've had a fire there, we've had several fires there. And you have a situation where you have almost 2,000 tourists a day coming into Soufira. With buses waiting up and down and boats and everything else. So imagine if, God forbid, one of those buses had an accident and you had to bring 15 people in at one time to that facility in Soufira. It can't cope. So we're building a mini hospital in Soufira. We're building a poly clinic in Denver. We're now building a new healthcare center on the Shoseh. Why? Because again, one of the assumptions about moving into OKEU, which the cost estimate is 70 million dollars a year. But then in perspective, Victoria Hospital costs 35 million dollars a year. So the assumption was that we would shut down Victoria and that the 35 million dollars that you were using for Victoria would go towards the operations at OKEU. But the question is, if you're going into less beds and the primary healthcare services were not gonna be ready, you can't shut down Victoria. So what services do you leave in Victoria? So what we've decided to do is to upgrade the services on the Shoseh and have a proper poly clinic service there. Because the goal was that we're gonna have it at Antropole. But a lot of people who are taking buses into town who are accustomed to going to that healthcare center on the Shoseh, Antropole is like going somewhere else. So we're now fixing up the primary healthcare services. The next thing that happened, how much is it really gonna cost to run OKEU? So let's look at two different things. When you go to Victoria, Victoria was being run by the Ministry of Health. But on the island, you had another hospital called St. Jude's. And the St. Jude's was always run by the nuns. And in 2000, the nuns brought in a hospital called Mercy Hospital. And Mercy Hospital set up an operating procedure for it. So a week after going to Victoria, I went to St. Jude's. And I remember St. Jude's is in a stadium. So what we would say, it's not in a purpose-built facility. So it's operating in a stadium. Whereas Victoria is in a purpose-built facility. You may not like it, but it was designed and has always been a hospital. So how is it at St. Jude's? There's about 25,000 people in San Lucia that have health insurance. Everybody who goes to St. Jude's, the accounts department collects the money from the insurance. Nobody who goes to Victoria did they collect the money. Because remember they have the lady there with the box? You go and see the filing system at St. Jude's. You see when you check in and how they process you. What we call that, we call that an operating system. That's what that is. It's the organizational structure. It's how everybody's trained and how they work together and the accounting system that you have. And one of the fundamental differences is that St. Jude's has a board. And it was run and set up like a private entity. But it is owned by the government, the people of San Lucia. So the decision again was to say, okay. Not I mean, but I support it, so I don't wanna play. I'm gonna be a very honest person here tonight. Is the decision was to run now OKEU as a millennium night. And it too would have its own board. But what I kept asking for is where's the organizational structure? So if you take the same people at Victoria and you physically move them to the OKEU and you don't change anything, I guarantee you in six months, despite being in a nice building, the quality of service is gonna be the same. Will be exactly the same. And so what I've been holding out for is that we have a proper organizational structure and that people are interviewed and that we allow them now to go into OKEU. And that wherever their shortfalls are, that we now provide short-term training, medium-term training and long-term training so eventually, San Lusians can run OKEU. But that's not gonna happen overnight. So we are now working with a company called Cayman Health City. I'm hoping that the contract is gonna be signed very soon. Cayman Health City is an Indian company. They own 50 hospitals around the world. Most recently, they opened up a hospital in Cayman. And it's doing phenomenally well. So again, this is where we're gonna be dishonest with each other. And what do we have? Alan Shastly wants to privatize OK. So I've said, OKEU is gonna have its own board. That is a private structure. The Cayman Health City people are coming in as consultants to assist us in putting the organizational structure. And why Cayman Health City? Because we met with Marneek, we met with the Canadians, we met with Colombians. But the Indians have become the world leaders in healthcare. They're providing quality healthcare at affordable prices. My good friends in Marneek, who I love and they have been incredibly gracious and kind and empathetic as San Lucia, run two hospitals on a billion euro a year. And if they run out of money, they call Paris. We don't have that. The Canadians were a lot of money. So I saw the structure that they had in Turks and Caithers. And it was a tremendous amount of money. And I knew that we would not be able to provide the cash flow to allow that to work. So the Canadians are coming in, helping us with the organizational structure, identifying where the shortcomings are from the individual people and providing a training program to bring them up to scratch. And at some of the levels, if in fact we don't have the talent in San Lucia, they will help us recruit the talent until the San Lucia person is ready now to replace that person. And I can say to you that a lot of people are very excited in understanding that they have an entity like that that's doing it on a global basis to be able to come in and help a fellow or a hand to make that work. At the end of it, one of the things that we want to consider in San Lucia, and this will be an important point for you, is to provide what we call tertiary level healthcare. So if we're able to provide tertiary level healthcare in San Lucia, 90% of why San Lusians leave San Lucia, they won't have to live. But here's the reality. San Lucia's 180,000 people. Think here in England. Does every little village have a hospital and provide tertiary health? No. You come to London, you go to Bristol, you go to Manchester, you go to core areas in where they have a critical mass. So the only way that we can make that level of quality of healthcare work in San Lucia is if we now bring foreigners to San Lucia to benefit from our healthcare. And foreigners are not just people who are getting healthcare in their countries, but there's the maritime business. If we can create a system that's affordable, we can bring sailors to come to San Lucia. If there's industry in our region and we can now provide quality tertiary level healthcare for them, affordably, we can bring ahead. And every foreigner that comes into San Lucia reduces the cost for San Lucia. Now here's the big thing. This is where the honesty comes in. I would estimate conservatively, 50,000 people in San Lucia, maybe more, do not have access to healthcare in San Lucia. So this idea where we've been talking about all these years, universal healthcare. What's the point of saying it's for free, but I can't get access to? So what's the reality? Reality is particularly among the elderly who have a tremendous amount of pride, who've gone to the Victoria Hospital, who've gone to St. Jude's, and they're given a bill? They can't pay the bill? Guess what they do? They don't come back because they feel embarrassed. If they're not feeling well, they're scared to go to the doctor because one, they may be able to afford a doctor's visit, but if the doctor gives them a prescription, can't afford it. Or people are told that they have high blood pressure, they're given a pill and they wait until they get a migraine headache to take the pill because they can't afford to get the pill to take it every day. So when in opposition I said, "We fashir", that's where it came from. It came from that the system was not working and that vulnerable people in our country were being affected and their voices had become silent. And they had just accepted it as being the norm. And in that acceptance and that level of mediocrity, people were leaving San Lucia. San Lusians were not coming back to San Lucia. And investors stopped coming. And it's not only true in healthcare. Education. I was at a school, Monolongo, it was built in 1982. 500 students and the government was allocating 4,000 EC dollars a year for maintenance. 4,000 EC dollars a year for maintenance. Was that a thousand pounds? Can you imagine maintaining your house for a thousand pounds a year? So when you went there, the roof was leaking, the teachers had buckets to capture the water. The bathrooms were nasty, many of the toilets weren't working. I went to the super comprehensive school. There was no doors in the classroom. The equipment had been there from the time that it hasn't built the schools. So all you can see how marked up the tabletops are. Electricity was bad. Plumbing was bad. So when we're talking about we're gonna create a world-class education system, I'm not telling you we have to have the fanciest schools in the world. But how do you motivate kids when they go to the school and it seems to them that nobody cares? So we've now spent 25 million EC dollars on fixing up 134 schools. And we're gonna spend another 10 million dollars next year. And that's what, that's basic things. That's redoing the roofs, fixing up the doors, redoing the electrical, fixing the plumbing. So this is not like saying, you know, making these modern schools. This is just making them so they're decent places to be able, for kids to be able to learn. Infrastructure in San Lucia roads. We were spending a million EC dollars a year. The estimate is that we need to be spending close to 30 million dollars a year just to maintain the existing roads. That's not building any roads. And the reason why we made it up to 30 million dollars is because we weren't fixing up the roads in the first place. So the cost of having to maintain the roads was going higher and higher and higher. And then the shock for me, I mean, I knew that our security system was bad. But first day on the job, no courthouse. No DPP. Only three lawyers in the DPP's office, and there's supposed to be eight. The forensic lab was closed. The radar system had not been working. And none of the marine police boats were working. None. So there was nobody going out. And to put it in perspective, we had a thousand case backlog in the criminal court system. So maybe a thousand cases may not seem like a lot, but let me tell you what a thousand cases is. It's two judges, full-time, for three years and 13 and a half million dollars estimate to fix that problem. That's just the backlog. So we've come in, I offered the judicial system to go into Ministry of Finance's new building. Unfortunately, they did not take me up on the offer. So we're in the process of building a new police headquarters next to where the prison was. And in that facility will be six courthouses. We've opened up now a new magistrate's court. We have the family court, we're fixing that up. And we're just about to open up a separate high court. And we have a temporary but outfitted criminal court. But we're gonna make the new courts at the police headquarters will be for the criminal system. We've put in 180 CCTV cameras and we're about to add 300 EBD on. The forensic lab is open. We're about to invest another 300,000 dollars to put in a DNA system. Because we're spending about a million and a half dollars to get DNA samples done around the world. And here's the problem, you know, because we're doing it that way, people wanna get paid in advance and anybody who tries to get money from government knows how difficult it is to get money from government. And so many cases are being delayed because they can't get the evidence tested. So it's cheaper for us to build our own. But you see, it takes so long because it's not in the budget. And there's this big fight that goes on, ah, 300,000 dollars. And I said, yes, but we're spending a million and a half dollars a year. Solid waste. The contracts for the garbage cars has not been reviewed in 10 years. There's been no increase in the price. So it means people are driving old trucks. And we have two landfills. One landfill in Dufour is three years over its past due date. It was supposed to be shut down three years ago. And Dade Global he has about three years left in the system. And we're on a slide. So this idea that we can continue to rely on having to use a landfill site is impossible. So if we decide to stay with the same system and maybe close down Dufour, which we have to, and use just Dade Global, it'll cost 7 million dollars a year or more for the new contracts. Plus it'll cost 8 and a half million dollars a year to pay for the transportation to bring the garbage from the south to the north. So you're talking about close to 15, 16 million dollars addition. And the sad reality is, is the number of places we're collecting garbage from doesn't increase. And we all know that we have to collect garbage more frequently. We have to collect it from more places. So if we want to do that, it's gonna be even more money on top of that. So the decision we've made is a new technology we're getting from Malaysia, which have incinerators. And the incinerators burn four tons of garbage a day. So what it means now is we can have multitude of smaller sites. So a site is about 15,000 square feet. And there's an incinerator, we dump the garbage into a bin and then put it into the incinerator on a daily basis. And it produces an ash. If we don't break up our garbage, the ash is for construction. You just add water to it and it becomes like a cement block. But if you can divide our garbage, like you do up here, and we use the fire degradable stuff, then the output now becomes a fertilizer. But it also means that I can spend less money now on transportation. And not that I'm going to spend less money, but it allows me now to spend more money on increasing the number of days we pick up garbage and the number of spaces we pick up garbage. the number of days we pick up garbage, and the number of spaces we pick up garbage. Now, I say these things to you because I want you to appreciate that this idea, that when I came into government, that people said, "what did you accomplish in your first hundred days?" Or when they say to you, "what did you cut done in your first year?" I can't honestly say to you, it's gonna take you, maybe three years, before people will start having a sense if we're on the right track. So if we go to the apartment below. Next page. I might be able to read that. Okay, so you're gonna have to take my word for it. So what we think we've seen? We've seen that the unemployment rate in San Jose, which I came in was twenty-five percent. Today it's fifteen percent. Alright? Youth unemployment that was forty-four percent is today at twenty-five percent. We've seen that we've had three years of economic growth. That we've reduced the debt to GDP from sixty-nine percent to sixty-four percent. That we've now had three years of running a surplus program, a primary surplus. So all this nonsense you're hearing out there, "oh, we're broke, the country", "things are not going well", things are going in the right direction. And then we almost said that, let's make the difference between heading in the right direction and getting to where we want to be. I could never be satisfied with fifteen percent unemployment rate. Never. But going from twenty-five to fifteen, what's that telling me? Moving in the right direction. And what's the good news is that none of the major big projects have started. No big hotel has been built. The airport hasn't started. The major roadworks haven't started. The moving of the container port has not begun. So where did that growth come from? That growth came from putting money back into the economy. Simply reducing the VAT rate from fifteen percent to twelve and a half percent put money back into the economy. And we immediately saw the corporate tax revenue go from, it was at ninety-five million before the introduction of VAT. The year after VAT, it went to fifty-five million. And over the next three years, it made up to seventy million. When we reduced the VAT, it immediately went back to ninety million dollars. So government's tax revenue went from nine hundred and fifty million dollars to one point two billion dollars. And increased almost three hundred million dollars by lowering taxes. We didn't charge property tax for three years. So that money gave people confidence, it gave businesses confidence. So even if some businesses didn't pass on the VAT rate savings to the customer, it increased their margin. Which means it paid to the corporate taxes. But by increasing their margins, gives them the confidence to do it, invest. In addition to that, we ended way into the IT market. So we brought a company called Ojo Labs, that does artificial intelligence. We're the first country in the Caribbean to have artificial intelligence being done in San Jose. And yes, the government provided the incentive, we took the same nice program that was paying people fifteen hundred dollars a month, and it was the same eleven hundred people for the three years getting the fifteen hundred dollars. All being run out of the head minister's office. Instead, we said we will contribute five hundred dollars a month for a year and a half, until that person is fully occupied, and then the company pays the difference. So today as we speak, Ojo Labs is employing close to four hundred kids. And we're injecting a half a million dollars every fortnight in majors, in DPP. So I know in my constituency, a young lady comes from a very, very poor family. And she's now the premier, and she ran, she started at two thousand dollars a month. And she's now at five thousand dollars a month. I was there and she bought the TV for her room. And that was the other big part of this, is that the country could not prosper because all of the businesses were concentrated in one place, up north. So how many people are living in the south, but either had to commute every day? Or migrate up north and leave their family? And what we understood, the secret to success in San Jose is not how much you make, it's how much everybody in the families. So everybody's contributing to the rent, and everybody's contributing to the groceries, and those who are not working but are putting in the time to take care of the kids. That's when the family unit becomes successful. And that's when people of San Jose's like become involved in. So what do we think said as a government? The minimum standard that people must have is everybody must have access to healthcare. Fixing up the buildings is part of the solution. But be fixing up the hospitals, getting the hospitals operating, if you could not afford to go to the doctor today, can you afford to go to the doctor tomorrow? And that's the fight that's been going on. And the solution to that problem, we believe, is healthcare insurance. That every single San Jose now must have access to healthcare insurance. And how is that gonna work? Because everybody has all kinds of different systems in the world. My government has said, "we will continue to pay the salaries of the doctors and nurses. We will continue to pay for utilities. We will continue to pay for all the capital investment into healthcare. But what we want the insurance to pay for is private doctor visits, prescriptions, and basic operations." So it means if everybody's participating in the health plan, the premium that people are gonna have to pay is much less. And government will pay the premium for the elderly, whose pensions are fixed, means they don't have any more money. For people who are vulnerable in our society, and for people who are unemployed. But all those who are working will make a contribution. But in, what are they getting? They're getting a card that they can go to the doctor and get a free visit. It means if somebody has high blood pressure, they're gonna get prescriptions that they can take the pill every day. If identify you that you're being prediabetic, I can put you on medication. Why is all of this important? This is important because how do you get into preventive health? If you're not getting people to take care of their problems today? So all of a sudden, if I want to be able to reduce healthcare costs in San Jose, diabetes and high blood pressure. And the good news here? Exercise and what you eat. But if you can't afford to go to the doctor, and he can't tell you that it's as simple as doing that, and say to you, "mama, if you don't start eating less yam, and a little bit less rice, and eat a little more fish", alright? If you can't, it means we'll walk around, and the kids gonna take you on the walk every day. Then it's not going to be good. But she needs to be able to go to the doctor. And going to the doctor, she can't be scared about who's gonna pay the bill. Or if the doctor gives her prescription to be able to help her situation, she needs to know that she's gonna get it every day. And then we now, we can now start knowing who is prediabetic, who has high blood pressure. And we can now start putting programs in place to make sure that she is walking. And we can have social workers that are going to go to her place to make sure that she's eating right. But the system that we have couldn't do that. Because all we had was twelve social workers. Twelve. Every day, people go around and try to get a driver's license, and people try to go and get their birth certificates. And it's a problem. I'm not running away from those issues. But my government, as Sarah said, does not have the latitude of saying we're gonna focus on healthcare. I'm gonna focus on education. I'm gonna focus on security. I'm gonna focus on infrastructure. I'm gonna focus on investment. Because unfortunately, not one of those things can solve my problem. If we don't grow the economy, and we don't have people who have jobs, it means the government will be paying all the healthcare premiums. There's nobody's employed. So the whole thing is integrated and works collectively together. And here's the big thing. When you are in government, change is difficult. Because the first suspicion is, is politics. And we saw it play out. There are some people who just can't help themselves, but politicize everything that we do in San Jose. And that's not gonna work. So when I say, "I'm not going to listen", I'm sorry. The labor party has lost the moral authority to make any comment or give me any advice on education, on healthcare, on the security system. They were in government for ten years, and they couldn't do it. They went out for five years to think about it, they brought back the same team. They were in government for five more years, they couldn't do it. Step aside. Come afresh. So I am not being arrogant. You think so? I disagree with you. I don't believe I'm being arrogant and not listening to them. You know who I'm listening to? I'm listening to the people. And I'm listening to the fact that people are complaining and they're not seeing anything change in their life. And that is what we're focusing on. That is what matters. Nothing else. We got no houses built for twenty years. In my constituency alone, we have ninety lots going up, Gail's constituency is gonna be another two hundred and thirty lots. We have houses going up in shock. Because government is putting together programs that understands we have limited capital, but making sure we get it done. In education, we're about to introduce something that's novel. Not for you. It's worked in England. England used to come last to the Olympics. Am I right? And all of a sudden, somebody said, "you know what? Let's change our system, it's not working." And they decided we can't be involved in every discipline, let's focus on some key disciplines. And reintroduced sports back into the schools. Created academies, and areas of specialty. And guess what now? England is up in the top three, top four. So we're going to be opening on the twenty-fourth of this month, a sports academy. So the Rosley School, which was the one that nobody wanted to go to. We've now put in forty dorms. The under fifteen football team is gonna be the first team moving in. Wait, do you see the pictures of what the rooms look like? All the training centers are there. We're laying down thirteen million dollars of new football facilities around the island. So in Sufrera Strack, and a new football field. In Shozel, Laxhae. In Miku Secondary, in Derisso, in Denly. And now also in Rosley. And we intend to continue to add more and more facilities. Hopefully, you saw my Facebook site, I got to meet the president of FIFA. And I went back to meet with him again, to do what? To create a professional football league for the Caribbean. Because it has to be an aspiration for our younger people. It has to be a step up. And what's the sports academy all about? Create an academic program that allows them to become and compete on a global basis as athletes. So it's not about just a coach. It's about nutritionists, it's about psychology. It's about fitness. And that those coaches now become the trainers of all the other coaches the rest of the island. But how is it gonna work? Can we put it into the schools? Because school ends at two thirty. And kids are commuting to the schools. So we said, "let's go back to the club system." So in San Jose, there is the, what's it called, the aquatic center. One twenty-five meter pool, eight clubs, primary level, secondary level. And because there's eight clubs sharing the facility, there's constant competition. And because there's eight clubs, when they bring some of the teams from the outside, there's a lot of teams for them to compete. And what's been the result? We're seeing more and more kids getting into Olympic level. We have five kids already who are at university, on scholarship, because of San Jose. And education, well, athletics is about values. How learn to lose? How learn to win? The importance of teamwork, the importance of discipline. But the kids who are good enough can get a scholarship. And maybe some of those athletes are successful enough to become professional. And so every time Charles goes into the ring, he's got what? A San Jose flag. All our kids, Laverne, there isn't a time that she's gone and she's jealous, somebody has not said, "from San Jose". We have a really great athlete coming up, Julian Alfred, who's currently at Austin University, but she had to leave San Jose to go to Jamaica. But she won the gold at the Commonwealth Games in a hundred meters. My volleyball teams, my basketball teams are starting to pick up. And what does this do? This helps in the self-esteem for San Jose's, because we learned that we can compete. Here's a little known fact, or unknown fact. How great is Singapore? How great is Singapore? Amazing, right? And what's the population of Singapore? Five million. How many Nobel Prize winners do they have? How many Nobel Prize winners do they have? None. Two. Right? How how little we take pride in our achievements? So my government has come out with a mission to say that we want to build a new San Jose. I wanted that nobody would have any idea in their head that this is about tinkering. I said from early, change is difficult. Alright, there's a complex we call, the NIMBY complex, anybody ever heard of that? Not in my backyard. Alright? Everybody votes for change, but it can't affect me. Yeah? Because we're not looking at it, is this gonna make better sense for all of us? It can't be that only some of us or most of us succeed. It only works if all of us succeed. And what does that look like? It looks like if you have your home in Marsha or in Bruceville, that your house right there soon, that your house should be as safe as it is up in Kapistak or in Radyo. Regardless of what your income is, and you get access, and you get the same quality of healthcare. And this idea that your child sits in exam, and based on the results of it, they go to a better school. How is that for you? Want all schools to be the same, same quality? But we're not gonna succeed if those little things don't change. So here, within three years, we have been able to make fundamental changes. We're adding all of this additional money, but we've not added any debt burden to San Jose. Without any major capital projects, simply by restructuring things, we've been able to see growth in the economy. We're seeing jobs come back. Is it where we wanted to be? No. But I say, by next summer, with the airport project starting, with the roads starting, with some of the hotel projects getting off the ground, the DSH project, I believe unemployment will be close to single digits by next summer. And then we're making it so the San Jose's can benefit. So even the work that we're doing, the contractor for the airport is who? A Taiwanese construction company. Who did what? They built the St. Vincent Airport. They also built the one in Taiwan. And who are they using? Local contractors. Because we've gotta build that capacity within the country to be able to grow. But those are the real wonders. That's really what's happening. So the answer to your question is, is that we are building a country in which you can come back and live anywhere in San Jose. Now, when you see Euphoric and you're going out to Sufira, and what we're going to be doing in Shawzell, and what we're going to be doing in Hanson Ray, and what we're going to be doing in Denry, what we're going to be doing with the revitalization of cast trees. I sit there and I, we fight over what? Sir John did a vision plan for the country in two thousand and eight that called for us to break down the pantry, the parliament building, and the courthouse. I said, we're going to break it down. Everybody made a big noise, said, no problem. We went back to consultation. Guess what the consultation came back with? Down the buildings. You don't need to be a genius. In those three buildings, there's twenty-three people being employed. Sorry, thirty people. Eight people in the parliament building and twenty-three in the pantry. Now imagine that space being a park. And when you come into town, the first thing you're going to see is the church. And that's about priorities. So I was being asked to continue the redevelopment of the Derek Walker facility on the Shosei. But that's not going to work unless the rest of the cast trees is working. Tourists are not going to make it that far. But meanwhile, my vendors and everybody who are using the cast trees market, it was a disgrace. So I sent the team clear, come and see Boros Market. Ask what we want. We want a place in which we can buy fresh food, we can buy fresh flowers, but there's arts and crafts, and it's fully integrated, there's small restaurants and small bars. And so we're spending thirteen million US dollars on fixing up the cast trees market. And it will become the number one tourism destination, I guarantee you, in Sanlucia. Because ask what tourists want? And what's the lipless test? The lipless test is that when a solution is where they travel abroad and they want to buy something authentically Sanlucian, guess where they're going to go? Cast trees market. But it's not about just building the facility, it's about the training capacity. So the work that we're doing in synergy and helping young people become entrepreneurs. So my message here to you, because I want to give you an opportunity to answer questions, is the plan is comprehensive because the goal understood that in order to get you to come back home, we had to build a new Sanlucia. It had to be that you could go online and get your driver's license, that you can go online and get your passport. And so making the decision to do that, it's not just as easy as flipping a switch. It means you have to go now and digitize all of the information. You have to put all of the information into a platform. In choosing the platform, I have to make sure the platform is integrated with immigration, integrated with the transportation department, integrated with ill and revenue, integrated now with my healthcare system. Because the government had become so weak that everybody was running a mini-government by themselves. So everybody had a lawyer, everybody has a construction team. And so it's the same, oh, you're in education, teach, build, build. And if you have contracts, put them through the Attorney General's office. And if it's taking too long through the Attorney General's office, fix the problem in Attorney General's office. Don't now hire another lawyer somewhere else. We have a wage bill of four hundred and forty million dollars a year, salaries for public service. And we're spending a million US dollars a year on training. And that million dollars also included paying them leave with pay. No money. How are you going to have a proper system if you're not continuously training your staff? So the message I want to leave you with is that the mission that we had was a difficult one. But the good news is we need that. That's why we use the slogan, build a new Sanlucia. And the solution is going to make you want to come home. And it's not even a question you're going to have in your mind. And you'll know when that gets to you, right? Good. It's a solution, a solution can get an education and get training in order for him to be competitive on a global basis. There's no point in having an education system, understanding that Sanlucia has to compete against the world. And you're not going to have an education system that allows them to do that. You can't accept anything less. And that's why we've said is the size of our economy in Sanlucia is too small. One point seven billion dollars. Argos is a hundred thousand more people than us, they're five billion. The Bahamas is two hundred thousand more people than we are, they're twelve billion. Aruba, a hundred and ten thousand people, they're twice the size of the economy of Sanlucia. And all they have is tourism. So part of it has to be how do we grow this economy? So if I'm going to double or triple the size of the economy of Sanlucia, it's obvious the airport is too small. There's not enough roads in Sanlucia. We're not producing enough water. But if in fact the economy grows and you have to depend on the current government structure to get services, everything will fail. If we're going to create more jobs and there's not enough people, the only way to solve that problem is improving the productivity of the people, which is what? Education. And let's time off for health. And so therefore, sports, all ties in. Kids who are joining gangs. Don't want them to join gangs, I want them to join clubs. But the big thing is we have to change solutions to know that we can't keep thinking somebody else is going to come and do this for us. The reason why the aquatic club works is because the parents volunteer their time. When I played basketball, in addition to being the captain and part-time coach and playing, also had to go and raise money, get money to go and get the tickets, organize the tournament. That's not what kids are supposed to be doing. That's what the adults are supposed to be doing. The kids are supposed to be focusing on playing. But you know that. Because that's what goes on here. So three years into this thing, I can tell you we're making substantial progress. I think that by next year, some of the projects will be coming to their fruition, major projects will have happened. And you can see it. When I saw people react to what we did in Sufira. Because stopping the square was not about politics. Stopping the square was because the square was not relating to being the heart of Sufira. It was too important. It didn't reflect the history. And now it does. At the waterfront, in having a market and having a bus stop, and having a Hummingbird Beach Park that is a Sufira, that you could go to the beach and there's a washroom. And there's a bar which I can buy a pizza at a local price. And then I feel that I'm welcome. And here's a funny thing, tourists prefer to go to those places. Tourists are not so stupid. They don't use the word tourist trap for nothing. So it's like, when you go to a Chinese restaurant and you look in, you don't see any Chinese people, you don't go. Alright? If I'm going to go to Sanlucia and I see locals with smiles on their face hanging out on the beach enjoying themselves, that's where I'd go. And tourism was putting together an entity that could make a difference. Not enough money was being spent on marketing, too much money was being spent on events. Created a second events company. Can't have one event costing fifteen million dollars. For the same fifteen million dollars, we're doing four events. And everybody's like, oh, it can't work, can't work. Well, Jazz is doing well. We had the best carnival ever. I can say to you, if we continue at the pace we're going, Sanlucia will be known as the best summer carnival in the Caribbean for sure. That was the success that we had. And so a young guy who was in the rental car business now sold out his cars for Jazz, sold out his car for Carnival, sold out his car for Roots and Soul. That's what makes a difference, is we're spreading it. So I want to make sure that we stay in touch. I'm very glad that Dr. Fletcher has agreed to take on this impossible task. But her job is to help people organize. One of the things that has been brought up now, preemptive questions, I'm sure it's going to come up, is with regards to third generation citizenship. So we have made a commitment as a government to make that change. And so I want to inform you that that change will also require a constitutional change. And a constitutional change requires two-thirds majority. So I do not want to speak a lot about the details because I have not had a chance as yet to be able to speak to the opposition. And so I want to certainly not sell it as my idea. This is an idea that came from the diaspora. We've looked into it and we will hope to get the support of the opposition to be able to go to parliament and to make that change. To allow third-generation Sanlucia's to be able to now apply for their citizenship. It's something we feel strongly about. For some of the entrepreneurs that are here, clearly if you're in the business of arts and crafts or in the arts, I want you to start thinking about creating a franchise system in Sanlucia. Alright? So adopting some of the vendors, dressing them properly, helping them design their display. We will give them locations around the island and they can sell their product. Alright? So you don't have to physically be there. So if you have great products, the same way that we're trying to market up here, and you should think of becoming the agent of some of our products in Sanlucia, they reverse works. So whether it's a clothing store, just take a simple thing like t-shirts, it's two thousand and nineteen. Really? Where's the t-shirt with Derek Walker? Where's the t-shirt with the green parrot? Where's that "Solutions" saying t-shirt? If I see another one of those Rasta things that says, yeah, Madison Lucia. And it wasn't even made in Jamaica. Right? We can do better than that. And that these are the opportunities of the creativity, because that creativity can only come from you, because only we are Sanlucia. Only we are. Sandy Beach, huge conquest, right? So when you get to the bottom of the airport and you get onto the concrete road, the plan is how to design a new road. And the new road will go along the fence of the highway. And it'll go into beautiful town in that direction. So when you turn the corner, you'll be around the world of buses or the families of the family who guys are, that's where we will go. Now, the space between the concrete road and going back to town, we're not going to make that into a village. And we've simplified it, we're putting in water, electricity, sewers, we've zoned it out into smaller lots and bigger lots. Where you now can build your own hotel, you can build a parking lot, you can run your own business and run your own restaurant. And the advantage here is we're creating an atmosphere that's going to be conducive to that. And why do we need to do this? We're in the process of getting at least one for sure, possibly two, cruise ship terminals in New York. And one of them and one of them is with Kino with the lines that their passengers actually come on board in Sanlucia. So we have a vehicle called Prey or Post. If people come from that and they're staying two days in Sanlucia and staying in a sandy beach kind of environment, it becomes ideal. And I want to say to you that we are putting special incentives in place that will be even better than the incentives we give to foreign investors. Alright? So Invest Sanlucia will be coming out very soon. They're going to be coming on tour with the ambassador to encourage you. I really want Sanlucians and in particular the diaspora to take advantage of that. Invest Sanlucia, as well as the Ministry of Housing, as I indicated to you, are now creating a lot of new housing lots. Where we're both putting in the facilities, more electricity, roads, that you can buy just a lot. Or we're having where you can build a home for you. So again, you don't have to worry about planning approvals for the development, you don't have to worry about whether the roads are completed. We're actually putting all of that in for you, and all you have to be able to do is to buy a lot, and I'm going to say this to you, move fast. Like my seventy or ninety lots in Darasul, we had ninety, we had over five hundred applicants within one week. Alright? There's a two hundred and fifty lots going to be coming up in Vora on the way to Sir John's Wall Estate. A beautiful, beautiful piece of land. I know you love Darasul. Alright? So there's a lot happening back home. This idea that the country is going into debt, I want to dismiss that idea from your head and explain to you what is it that your government has done. So if you keep pretending you don't have a problem, it doesn't get fixed. So let me increase the airport tax. We went from twenty-five dollars to ninety-eight dollars. And we increased the gas tax. So the gas tax generates around thirty million US dollars a year. And the airport tax generates around seventy million US dollars a year. So we generated a hundred million dollars in additional revenue. But we did not put that revenue into the central fund. Because if I put it into the central fund, it would bury the problems that we had. So we're trying to fix the problems, keeping the problem as it is. But the hundred million dollars is what we're using to finance our debt. So the airport is being paid for by the airport tax. The difference between what the Labour Party was going to do, which there was nothing wrong in what they were going to do, is that they were going to assign sixty dollars of the airport tax to a company for thirty years. And that company would have built and designed the airport. Okay? And you know, the advantage of that would be that the debt would not go on to our national debt. Because it would be considered a third party that's doing it. But we're doing it for thirty-five dollars. And we took a loan for twenty years. And we think if there is a slight increase in the amount of arrivals, which we think there will be, that we can pay the debt off in eleven years. So the difference between the two plans is sixty dollars times twenty years. Right? Which is about one point nine billion dollars. So the difference is instead of the one point nine billion dollars going into the hands of a third party, and that that third party decides what to do, is that by the eleventh year, that money is coming to the government's evolution. So the west coast and north-south highway that we want to build, by then we're going to have to have new roads. We're going to want to expand our schools, and we're going to be in a position in which we don't have to borrow that money from somebody else. We're starting accumulating that revenue by ourselves. So that's why when you look at the fiscal results of the government, it's showing a very different result. Because we did generate more tax revenue. But where is that tax? Where are you coming from? Eighty-five percent of the people who travel to Sanlucia are tourists. The difference between putting a license on a vehicle and a gas tax is the license on the vehicle, if you don't have any work with the vehicle, you're still paying a license. But if it's a gas tax and you're not using the vehicle, you don't pay any tax. And so this is what we're saying, is to look at taxes that are less oppressive. Taxes that help growth, because the money has to come from, everybody has to be taxed. So this is what we're doing. In terms of the citizenship by investment program, when it came in, the Attorney General advised me that the economic fund that was designated, there was not enough legislation to allow me to transfer the money and to create an economic fund. So we said, it's no problem. We came to parliament and I said, here's what the problem is. The government is going to take the CIQ money and put it into the accountant general. Okay? So that means all the money can be accounted for. And the only way I can extract it from the accountant general, from the central coffre, is through the appropriations bill. So we go to the appropriations bill and we show all the projects that we're going to be funding. So there's a hundred percent accountability as to where the money is going. We went to the House and we've changed the legislation so we can now create an economic fund. The money will move into the economic fund, it's being managed by five people, I think the Director of Finance, the Chief Economist, some other people. And that money will be used to lend to projects in Sanlucia. So for instance, if the Ministry of Education wants to do a project, it can borrow the money. If the Ministry of Infrastructure wants to do a road, it can borrow the money at a low rate. Why? Why are we doing that? Because we want the money to be equity for Sanlucia. So every day you put another dollar into the economic fund, the wealth of Sanlucia goes up by one dollar. And if it has receivables, it doesn't diminish the value of that dollar. But we have to learn the value of money. But we have to learn the value of money. So it's not all just spending money and wasting it or putting it into programs and it's just a one-time. We need to build that because we have to build our reserve of monies. Why? Two weeks ago, we got the answer. What would happen in the Bahamas? Physically rent there. It's horrifying. Alright? Can you imagine 30 hours under a category 5 hurricane? And we know what that is, right? With the rain and the wind. But here's the part that we didn't know. That the sea level rose by 12 feet and everybody was on the water. That roofs were being blown off, not because of the wind. The roofs were being blown off because the water was coming up underneath and pushed the roof off. And then there's nothing there. So 20,000 people literally are going to become refugees. And more than likely, more than half of the people on Grand Bahama, which is 50,000, are also going to become refugees. And we're talking about in excess of $8 billion. Dominica that got devastated, if it was not through the citizenship by investment program, there would be nothing going on in Dominica because the world doesn't care. That's the reality. And today, more so because of nationalism, people give even less. So we have to take care of ourselves. So we've got to build a reserve of money. But if we need to do something now, then we can do it now. Can't keep living on the future. At some time, you have to start paying down that money. That's what my government believes. That we will leave office, we will be money. When we left office last time, there was $200 million in a reserve. They spent it all. All of it, gone. There's an old, money to borrow, money is too expensive. So it was cheaper to use that money. We didn't understand. It's not all just getting money cheaper. It's about having something that you can control your own destiny on. So I don't expect everybody to share our economic ideas. That's okay. I don't expect to be Prime Minister forever. And that's okay. I don't want to be. I remind myself every day, you know what I am? I have an ant. Have you ever watched ants building an ant hill? Yeah? You watch it, you all line up and everybody, some ants carry a little bit more weight than others, but everyone is an ant. If you take a straw, if you take out those ants, what happens? They just fall back in line. We're all, we're all replaceable. So I keep on praying and I thank you for your prayers that I can continue doing this work. I am very proud of the team of ministers I'm working with. I can tell you. Take each individual one and see how they're performing. Phenomenal, and people out there working. So I'm hoping that you're proud of what we're doing. I'm hoping that I've answered Mrs. Rosemary's question. And she will know, and you will know, by the time you come home. Because you're going to see the difference. I have not gotten into what we're doing in buses. I've not gotten into what we're doing with the new tablets for education systems. Okay? There are so many more things that I can speak about when our government is going to be involved in. But we're excited, we're busy delivering and building a new solution. And thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, can we have another round of applause for our minister? I'm sure he was not able to answer all of your questions in his presentation because we are short on time. But we want to give you the opportunity to ask some questions. So we're going to spend the experience, we have two roaming nights, one on this side, one on the other side. You don't need to get up, the lights will come to you. We'll take, we'll take two questions on this side and two on this side and then we'll let the Prime Minister answer. So start about rolling.
I have a question for Dr. Fletcher and a question for our honourable Prime Minister. But before I ask a question, I really want to express gratitude as a San Lucian who just arrived in the UK in 2012. I really want to express gratitude to all the San Lucians in the UK who have worked tirelessly and have given so much of their time, their family time, finances to make sure that there is support at home and in the UK. So could we have a round of applause for all of us here? I want to make a personal statement myself. I have one question for Dr. Fletcher. I'll ask both questions, it doesn't matter which is answered first. Dr. Fletcher, you made note of the diaspora policy. I wanted to ask question number one. Is there any scope within that policy for persons in the diaspora who aren't members of an association who participate? Does the policy make allowances for that? And on the Prime Minister, you were looking earlier to Singapore and you were, you're pointing us to show how great the economy in Singapore is doing. And we know that Singapore, South Korea, Taiwan and most of the Asian countries, they are using the model of Sir Arthur Lewis. The question to you, Prime Minister, is if we have a Nobel laureate whose economic policy is breaking waves and making changes across the states, what are we doing as a country to use the model that Sir Arthur has given us as a people and other countries are frightened of and we're not frightened?
Do you have two questions on the right side?
And first of all, I have a question. Are we taking another question on this side first? This is a question earlier. So a lot of questions here.
Thank you, good evening. I'm a San Lucian born. I've just come back from Rotterdam Wednesday this week and I've spent a lot of time going around the country. Now, what I've noticed when the Lucians come back to San Lucia with goods and things to get from customs, we have to go through a 10-stage situation to get the goods out. Go here, go there, go here, go there. And it takes about 2 hours. Have you looked at trying to get that process tied down to about three processes? I went to the new customs place near Hess and that's a very fine-tuned model that we should follow. The other thing is, which is connected, transport is important to get goods and services moving around the country. Now, could we not adopt the English model? If somebody hits somebody in the back on the highway, it's airport, so we don't need to call the police. We don't need to shut down the road for 2 hours. Get the transport moving and get goods and services around the country. Could we adopt the English model which San Lucia seems to have been built on in the first place? Yes?
So we have two questions on the right side.
Thank you, thank you. Prime Minister, just thank you for your honest work in San Lucia. And thank you for all the news you've given us. Prime Minister, there's one impressive question which we seem to have we have an answer specifically. Prime Minister, it's been alleged that there's been an uprising violence in San Lucia, mainly guns. In Barbados, I understand that the Beijing Prime Minister has implemented his task force to implement work with the police force. So it's not this deterrence happening in Barbados. Can you explain to us, Mr. Prime Minister? Yeah, can you explain to us and the audience what steps have you put in place to address the situation? So for us, the answer is when we go back, we feel safe. That's one of the questions. Can I come back to it later?
Good evening, I'd like to welcome Prime Minister Tolan. Just a quick question on sport tourism. We spoke of the Cruzeley School being turned into a sports symposium. It's not coincidence, actually a boxer came from the diaspora and boxing, the school of boxing is always left in the background. So I was thinking if you would support the sporting programs that will be implemented in the sports facility?
Just to briefly answer the young lady on diaspora. Diaspora, we sent the policy out to all the associations, all individuals that we have their email addresses on. When you get a handle on the diaspora policy, you will see everything that diaspora is. All solutions. All solutions, even out of solution or exciting or exciting solution. So my office deals with all AWM, all solutions, whether you're an association or not. You are, we are responsible. It doesn't matter what your race, your religion or your political status is. Don't even bother. When you come to me, you're only San Lucian and therefore you don't have to be. But we encourage you to join the associations. Unity is always strength. So as far as returning home, if you were here earlier, we said that in the policy, the diaspora policy which is approved, have little policies that address all of those things. Parks, investment, making things easy to invest, to return home, to re-accommodiate as they say in San Lucia, reintegrate, all of these things. We, the diaspora office and the USLOA and the resource team we have, customs, all of these are on board. We are looking at and we're preparing those policies to present to cabinet. But I can't do it alone. The association's working with us to do it. So this is the trend's going, painful to it.
Thank you, Sarf Luwes. One of the core premises that he had was called investment by development, player by investor. Which means what? Improving the capacity of growth and becoming competitive. Now, if you're going to grow, the growth for a small state has to come from outside. There's no way that with 170,000 people that we can sell enough goods and services to each other to allow us to afford the quality of life that we all want. So we need to become competitive on a global basis. That's how Singapore became. Singapore used to be heavily into agriculture. It got to the point that the businesses that could have bought on the land that was producing agriculture were going to employ more people, generate more foreign exchange and therefore they not import agriculture because they've become more productive in other areas. And one of the critical things that was, education. But education now has changed where one has to question the value of a lot of the degrees that we get. So a lot of tech, technical training is what people require to be able to add that necessary value to what we're doing. So one of the examples of that is we have what's called a headquarters act. So we allow companies to come up and invest in San Lucia and open up their headquarters. They have to employ a minimum of 10 people and they have to either own a building or they have to rent a building for 5 years. And their staff get to be their tax group. Whether it's a solution or a foreigner, their tax group. The corporation is corporate tax group. Why? Because when I went to Geneva, in Geneva, there's 34,000 people who work at the UN tax group. But guess what? They rent homes, they buy homes, they buy cars, they consume gas, they go to the grocery stores, they go to the restaurants and they're traveling in and out. So the government makes its revenues through consumption. These are people that would not have been there. Since we've introduced the Act, eight companies or nine companies have opened up in San Lucia. All of the office space was available up in Rotterdam. The Johnsons Building is an example. Was empty for almost 5 years, is completely full. People can't find a space to rent anymore. And we're now going to give incentives to allow local businessmen to be able to build more office space and to build more space for residences. So this idea of creating a country and what do we need? We need quality healthcare, we need quality education and the country needs to be safe. Okay, no one's going to come and move to San Lucia if it can't have those basic things. So these are all the principles of what Sarf Luwes talked about and this is what Singapore and Taiwan and everybody else are benefiting from. But I want to remind you, Singapore is 5 million people and next to Malaysia, which is another 30 or 40 million people. We are in the process of introducing a border control system. I'm very happy that the UK government is actually going to be helping us with that. So it means we're going to be integrating customs and immigration, quarantine as well as marine police. And we're putting a whole system on e-government. We just approved the ACIS, which is Advanced Carbon Information Services. So it means that people can pre-clear their goods before they come back and exactly what we talked about in cul-de-sac is it, my wife keeps saying cul-de-sac, is going to become standard throughout the country. Alright, so we're going to be making it substantially easier and including in the airports. The accidents on the car, I'm glad you brought it up. So we've introduced, as I told you, 180 CCTV cameras from Cruzeley to Castres and it has helped tremendously. Because now people know that there's a video of the accident and things are getting settled substantially faster. I am as equally aggravated as you or trying to continuously meet with the insurance company that we can get, I mean, as many times you have to measure the same road guys?
Yeah.
You know? We just take a picture. There is a software that can allow you to put all the measurements in and move on. But this is ridiculous, particularly when the roads are so constrained. So I do agree with you. There are some measures that are already taking place and they're even further once they're coming. I'm really happy to ask you about crime. So crime again is not one of those things in which I don't mean to belittle any other political leader. But this idea, when I see the Prime Minister say, I'm not going to take this on anymore and I'm upset and blah, blah, blah. What does that mean? It's not going to solve the problem. Crime is much deeper than a Prime Minister saying that he's making it or she's making it a priority. And I know that Mia understands that holistic process. So it's not just about getting people to do their job. So when you have a thousand-case criminal court backlog, what does that mean? That means that somebody is put into jail in their, what's it called? On remand, when the people there for years. Or they're on bail. Right? Because they can't get their case heard. And so you know, there's one saying that says that crime should not pay but unfortunately people say that crime does pay. So the goal should be is if somebody is got caught, particularly on a criminal matter on Monday and they're charged, that we should know that they can be in court right within a week. So the faster you know that you can process it and find a conviction. Now, how do you do that? It's by the collection of evidence. So I'm sure you all saw the video last year of the kids who held up the break. Alright? And so they came up to the front and they held the gun, they held the gun by their hair. They opened up the till box, alright, and they had masks on. If you had CCTV cameras all around, what would we get? We would get DNA because we would have their fingerprints. We would have also had them sweating on that one thing. And then when they would have walked away, at some point they would have taken off their mask. Okay, so when you bring a person in and you say they have DNA matches and here's the video of you taking off the mask and I know who you are, the case gets resolved much faster. And I can say to you that it becomes a deterrent. But that's why again, another problem. So I got to fix up the forensic lab. Came in, the forensic lab was closed. Opened up the forensic lab and found out the forensic lab had a structural problem because there was an earthquake. So got that fixed. Then we found out that there was chemicals wrong in the paint that was used on the interior and it was affecting the evidence. Got that resolved. Okay, so hopefully we're getting there. Next problem that you have, not enough foot soldiers with policemen. So all of a sudden, we've introduced a program where we've increased the foot patrol of policemen. And the goal that we had this year was to see a reduction of 10% in serious crimes. Very proud to say to you that as I speak here today, the last report I got, which was before I left, we are at that 10%. Obviously, we want to have even more effect. We have, we've recruited 40 new policemen that started six weeks ago. And we've now put in 40 additional police officers. 20 are moving in the north, 10 are going into Supra, 10 are going into the southern part of San Lucia. All these people are going to be doing is being in the field. Increasing that level of presence. We know that that works. We've seen statistically that it works. Next problem that we have, kids are joining gangs. Two, two things for that. One, Venezuela commercialized our gangs. So the Venezuelans needed hard currency. Alright? So what they did is they came and interfaced with the gangs and got the gangs now to become the distributors of drugs, not only as an in-transit point, but to sell it locally. Now, once you now take kids who are fighting over a girl and a turf, you now give them drugs which gives them money. And then now what do they have to get to protect their money? Guns. But the same mentality exists. Alright, so that's why we imposed the visa restriction on Venezuelans. Had absolutely nothing to do with politics, not really interested in the politics in Venezuela. We have our own problems to figure out. But it can't be easy for Venezuelans to just come to San Lucia. I have to wait for them to commit a crime before I can expel them. So by having the visa restriction, many of them are coming to San Lucia illegally. So once I capture them, straight on a plane and back to Venezuela. And that has helped. We've got to do a better job with regards to our border control. That's why we're now going to the new border control facilities. Guns will come in here left, right, and San Lucia. And that's where all the prime places and guns come in. The barrels. So the technology's there, it's a scanner. But when I say to you that San Lucia was broke, San Lucia was broke, these basic things were not there. How do you not have a scanner? How can you run a port without a scanner? So those are the things we're putting in place and then putting a legislation in place that wants to be captured. I mean, I have people arrested for having a gun and bullets. And giving them bail. All arms of government need to be on the same page, no guns. But the reality is until we can control our border, that's not going to happen. Next big problem, can't have 12 social workers. So you know, we've had this discussion in San Lucia. I want to say, I am going to provoke all of us to think. One good thing about me is I put ideas out, I speak, and I say what we're thinking and allows people to be able to react. We talk about the plight of many young boys who are growing up in families without the support. Am I saying that single women cannot register? Never said that. I've seen young mothers, under the age, have a child and have enough family support in which the family members tell her, "Do not make that happen again", and then they adopt and take care of that child. But guess what? She's back in school. But too many of the young girls who are getting pregnant underage don't have that family support. Don't go back to school. So where do they go all day? Back on the block. And in two, two, they are pregnant again. And in two, two, they are pregnant again. And I'm saying, of San Lucia, it's not her fault. But it's our problem. And how do we resolve the problem if we only have 12 social workers? I mean, I mentioned the social workers, we have a case pool of 130, 140 people. My sister's here was a social worker. They're human beings. You think they don't take their problems over though? You don't think they get frustrated when they have, they don't have the resources to help somebody who needs help? You think they don't get frustrated? You don't think they get depressed? They do. But the problem, the situation is overwhelming. So what happens is that young boy goes up in a family in which the mother is on her fault, sends him off to school with the expectation that teachers are going to be that he's got the same period shoes on. And we get all the same, he gets teased, doesn't want to go to school, doesn't want to learn. And eventually, he leaves his town. And at least in his town, he is known. When he goes to Rodney Bay or goes somewhere else, he becomes anonymous. And he transforms. And he gets a family, and the family is called up again. And for the first time, he has male leadership in his family. And so he's changed. So how do we prevent that from happening? Is we've got to address the situation where that young girl has the first child. You don't want to say it, I'm going to say it. A young girl under the age of 15 having a child, that's called rape. And the fact that we're DNA testing and everything else. And then even when we talk about how much money the men are having to pay, the little they're having to pay, they're not paying it. But the solution of sending that young man to jail is not the solution. The solution is to get him to pay and understand he has a responsibility. And so that's why we have to start rethinking how we charge people and what we do. So if somebody steals from a farm, don't you think it's a much better idea that he has to go now and work on that farm and give back extra dollars to clear his name? Why would people get in jail and not go out and play? Now, I know what the criticisms are going to be, because I can anticipate the criticisms. Look, the prime minister knows all those answers, why didn't he do anything about it? We are. But guess what? You have to have title, everybody has to participate in the process. Okay? Because this is not something you can just make happen overnight. And you have to take sort of the systems are there. So one of them you need is a parole board. Alright, there was a agreement to put a parole board? No parole board has been assigned. I'm glad to say now that there is a parole board. Why should people continuously to stay in jail unnecessarily? I have to say to you personally, I don't like the jail. I think jails should be the last option to talk. I like that you have to go to a mandatory school and they're reformed. And you can give them the opportunity. But we have to think of better ways to become smarter about dealing with what our problems are. So the other big problem is, when people are now having to migrate from their villages, it's causing a big problem. This is why you see me pounding every day to develop work in the South. Because the South has been prejudiced against for too many years. A simple thing, people ask why? We went to, we had a cabinet meeting in New York. And it's never happened before. It's simple. But you have no idea what it means for the people in the South not to be forgotten. How do you elaborate on my government in the South? But that's where it's going to change. I need to grow the economy. We need about 36 to 40 social workers. To be able to start putting a dent into this, into this problem. Okay? But we're going to get it. One village at a time, one issue at a time. But I just want to say, issues in with crime, we're making some major roads. The fact that the CCTV cameras are there, the fact that the forensic labs are running, the fact that the courthouse is coming. These are all the infrastructural things to make it easier to be able to get convictions. Because if you don't get convictions, we're in trouble. I've got to build a border control system because we all know we shouldn't have ones. But me standing up and saying, "We shouldn't have ones", is not going to solve everything. Measure speed by what we are doing. That's what we're doing. To be able to actually feel more comfortable today that we're making a turnaround in crime and that we will live up to our expectations. But I can show you the evidence of our work and I can show you how each part of what we're doing is working. One, one, one last thing that Young Man asked about the sports, the boxing. DTP, Minister of Sports is putting together a criteria for the court discipline to be supported. So we've said, the first thing is, whatever support we're going to support, it has to be gender neutral. Do me a break. The second thing that we said is that it must offer support. And I see some young people participating in sports, I won't say what the sport is, I'll be putting it into trouble every time I do that. That after high school, there's work to go, there's scholarships, there's no professional leagues. And then the third thing is, they have professional leagues. So by far, the difference in sports in San Lucia is total. Alright, gender neutral, growing sport in America, so lots of special opportunities and a lot of professional leagues. So if you're going to do football, you might as well do track and field. Because wherever you put a football field, very easily do track. Then you have basketball, you have volleyball, you have swimming, and that all are going to begin. I know we have strong boxing, we have strong ping pong, table tennis, sorry. So the international association is working with all of the different associations to see who's going to be included in the school, but they're showing everybody this.
We will have two more players, two more players on the left and two more players on the right. And that's what we're going to have in two. So two, two more on the left.
My name is Mr Nicholas Alessandro, I'm from Singapore. A question to Prime Minister Lewis, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned that you have legislation in place in relation to guns which is coming over from Venezuela, certain countries. What other things have you got in place? What other statements have you got in place in relation to all those changes that you in fact have mentioned this evening and which you have in progress? What we will commend you, because you did say that you are an athlete and I believe that you are based on what you said about you do. But I regard you as a servant, a humble one of the people, please God. Now, with both changes, change is something that's hard to rectify amongst people. Especially when they have been having their tradition going on for so long. And it's a dreadful work for, you know, to be adopted and accepted by many. Now, what have you got in place in relation to education, setting up people for those changes? And plus the last one is, you mentioned that countries such as India and the South are being acquired for health purposes or health assistance. Have you got legislation in place? Because India is a big country and they come with all their, more or less, many people. Are we prepared with the rules for a lot of people that might be going through that? Thank you.
Again, a very good question. So we're going to have to move to the other side. One question, people to pay.
Yeah, I've got one question. My question to Prime Minister Lewis, you mentioned the rise of nationalism. I'm concerned to ensure that opportunities for English trade with the UK as an assault could be restricted. I'm not in the host of San Lucia who have been wrong, who have been and continue to be affected by this government's hostile immigration policy. I wish to know a negotiation for now, increase trade, will be alongside improving the best interest of San Lucia. Supporting people who are still trying to get their say, can't work, can't get homes, and this government's hostile immigration policy is directly affecting them.
Next question, over here.
Thank you. Okay, my question is, what can we do to make sure that our grandchildren are equipped to settle in San Lucia? I am aware that our High Commissioner is in particular here, but he obviously need extra support with this piece of work. We have an ambassador and I hope in her role that she will be able to give us space to this happen. And finally, I have to say, San Lucia has a lot to offer and they're ready. What people need to do is to be inclusive, ask questions, and connect with the right people. And you will get what you want. And we have to learn to think of things, I'm talking a bit on the final thing. We have to learn to think of things. We love too much free lunch. Let me be, I end. Thank you.
I want a photo of someone acting as a patient, I think on the floor in Victoria. Have you got anything in this, I don't know how to get you?
The question is, he has a photo of someone acting as a patient, I think on the floor in Victoria. Does the Prime Minister have everything in place to address that?
I say thank you, PM, for a very, very intensive dialogue into the amount of things you are doing and planning for San Lucia. Now, I'm born since, born since English heritage, born here. However, in terms of education, there's one thing which I didn't hear, and that is, what is going on about the Chinese government? Going to the city in the south. And I will mention a particular area which I'm quite concerned about. A little village called Monripo, which is a national of San Lucia. Because a lot of the historical activities actually came from Monripo. But for this administration, I'd say, to have allowed this small, big, big school to be shut down. And while that has happened, the children have migrated from all the little communities of Monripo to one school in Patias, which they're now extending while children are going to school. So what is happening there and why has this happened?
Okay, well, let me just go on this side.
So with regards to legislation for guns, we have a lot of legislation for guns. Our problem is that we can't find enough. So the borders have not been controlled. People can easily bring it in and make it point. A lot of guns are just coming through the containers. And I have to try to sneak in in the middle of the night. Because we don't have the systems in place, the modern technology in place to be able to stop it. So changing our port system, we're now in the process of looking to move the Castres Port to Kuldeza. We're looking to put more equipment in place, to be able to put the scanners in place. That's why we're meeting with the port of Miami. Buy these equipments on a volume basis and they also have maintenance right there in Miami. So putting scanners, all the scanners before the barrels. As well as now, more intelligence, there's more foot soldiers on the ground. And with the CCTV cameras, that we can be tracking when people are having involved in arms, we can find where those guns are. But it's not just legislation, legislation is there. We need to actually capture the people. We need to actually capture the people and then have different penalties when people are caught with them. We find that the courts, and again, you know, we don't intend to involve ourselves in the courts, but it has been a problem. In that the courts, particularly the magistrate level, we believe that once a person is caught with a gun or ammunition, they should automatically be in remand. And we have to have a much different penalty, but that's interpretation of the court. In terms of human health, and the Indian with regards to the the hospital, they're really helping us put the organizational processes in place and assisting us in evaluating what we need to get. The only people that were committed and were so guaranteed that they're going to be Indians is wherever our shortcoming is. So right now, we do have foreign doctors. We have human doctors, we have Indian doctors, we have English doctors, we have doctors all over the world who are currently working in our system. So this is not an anomaly. But the eventual goal is to be able to identify all the needs that we have and make sure that through this polished system that we're training people sufficiently to be able to have our systems. If we're able to get into tertiary level healthcare, then we become an industry. So a lot of nurses is an example, who are being trained or migrating because there's a huge demand for nurses in Asia. And we want to be able to actually help young women to get good degrees with the idea that they're going to be leaving. And if we can grow our healthcare system in Selo Shu, we're looking to keep the people home. So this is not about bringing a bunch of Indians in to run the hospital. Selo Shu is running the hospital. We're only bringing people in in some very specific areas. Initially, we're releasing them in this period of time. Very quick question about Brexit. I tried to make it a rule, we don't get involved in other people's business. But I would say to you, it seems to me that the UK is definitely heading to leave Brexit, to leave Europe. Whether in fact it's going to be that you're going to have no deal when October 31st comes, that's the end term. But I just think that we think that we will get a better deal if England is not in the EU. Right? We believe that we're going to be able to negotiate a better trade agreement with the UK. Possibly our bananas and some of our other products are cooked. We also believe in terms of assistance. We also believe that with what's taking place wholly right now with the blacklisting. We know that England believes that it has the best financial services sector in the world. And therefore, a lot of the things that the Europeans have been advocating for, I think that independent England would be more in our side than against it because it would be supporting their own industry. In terms of the relationship with the West Indians who are up here, you're very powerful. As the voting, when the voice came up. And why? There's this 14 states in the UK in which the character of the folk makes the difference. Don't forget that. And so you are our strength. We don't have that in a lot of other places, where the character of the people can make such a difference in the politics of the country. So it's important that we have our own individual associations. It's very important that we integrate those associations to provide our character and the asset. It's very, very important that we have an advocacy program that's very clear. I would say to you that you should only have like three or four core issues that you should be talking about. And if every association is repeating those four things, that's when the team comes. So I think that when Britain comes in, it's pending that new voice is going to carry even more, and it was carrying force. I think working in harmony, that will do a really great job together. You guys have done an amazing job already, as it is. The young woman that was on the Victoria forum, sadly, that's not the first time. That doesn't make it right, doesn't make it wrong. But the solution is, what we're currently going to be doing at OKEU and getting it open. We were about to open it. The breakers were bad, we had to change the breakers. The air conditioner went bad. Because a lot of people, many people do that. The OKEU hospital has been finished for six years. You remember that? Right? Six years. Village is it?
Where is the location of those?
It's up along, if you know the Millennium Highway. So I think it's at the top of the Millennium Highway, on the left-hand side. So it's very sad, but unfortunately, it's not the first time. And you know, that's what upsets me about Victoria, is that the operating procedures of Victoria would not have prevented something like that attack. And it's unacceptable. Okay? Absolutely unacceptable. And that's why, in moving into OKEU, this emphasis is about putting a new manager structure in place to prevent stuff like that. Okay? The last one is a very, very interesting topic. Here's a statistic, because you can see I take numbers. In 1995, we had 32,000 primary students. Today, we have 15,000. And today, we have more teachers than we had in 1995. The Monripo school, which I have the opportunity to go and visit because it's my neighboring constituency. And also, the minister representing that area is also the Minister of Education. And we have to come to this decision to make. So you have a situation where the Monripo school was in dire need of, not now, but for a long time. And it's got to the point where the school was unsafe. So the decision was made, let's fight the bullet now, and merge them. And I would have liked to have had it on a more smoothly basis, meaning done one before the other. But as I said to you, no money was being allocated. So we put $10 billion in. You'll be amazed how fast 10 billion dollars changed. The Davina was secondary responsible. We spent $1 billion on that school ad hoc, and it still needs another million. One school. And that's what we've been spending as a government, every year, $1 million. So you can imagine how bad that the schools are. But I think that in all seriousness, to Gail, and that's what I love about her leadership, right? She had to convince all the other NFTs that the same thing has to happen. So what did she do? She started to revert to her first. That's incredibly leadership. Like I say to you, there was an initial, like the WIBP, a natural reaction of people not being happy. And Gail went down with her team. She spent a lot of time there, and I can say to you, at the end of the evening, there was love, hugs and kisses. And I hear it, and I know that that is emotional passion. But the reality is that what is happening between Monripo and Pastia just happened also up in, I think it's in Valet, where the school was merged. And there's going to be other examples of this taking place. Because we're down to 15,000. Okay?
Because it means, as faith-based school, we here, we're embracing faith, and we try to make sure that most of our faith schools will collaborate with our independent schools. So when you tell me faith-based school is being destroyed, where are those children going to get their faith to grow up?
We want all of us to be faith-based. Look, it's integrated. I can assure you that the parents are making sure that that's being integrated into the system. But we, I think that we strongly believe that faith needs to come back into this system. Right? Family, the Lord, and values are incredibly important to my government. Now, I listen to some people talk about whether we should have prayed that the storm didn't come or whatever. But the Lord matters. Yeah? And you know, somebody said, what is the Prime Minister saying? When he prayed for Dorian not to affect Selo Shu, that Selo Shu was a good people, but the people from Bahamas are bad people. The Lord does things to help teach things. And maybe they don't become ready to move ahead. And I can tell you that when I went to Alaco, there was nobody cursing the Lord. In fact, everybody I saw thanked the Lord for sparing their life. The house, everything else, didn't matter. But not everybody was as lucky in which they lost a loved one. And it's like losing a loved one at any time, and particularly when it's a young person. Hard for us to understand. You know, I have a person that's very close to me in my office, who lost her with our 18-year-old daughter and her best friend on the same night. And they were just leaving the graduation ceremony. Imagine? But it's faith. Where she loves to give the 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 eulogy. I don't wish to have a ceremony. I don't think I could do that. But she's only do that if she's believed in the Lord. And I say this to you, as a government, very, very important to us. And I'm sure that Gail and that community, because that community is very vocal, that's who you're taking care of. Unfortunately, these are some of the biggest issues we're having today. The numbers just
I think this is a very good note on which we're getting the Prime Minister's presentation. And let's have another round of applause for the Prime Minister. Now, we wanted to ensure that we have a few minutes that you can have your one-on-one discussions and full ops with the Prime Minister. But if you don't stop now, they're to the life of him. We don't have it, okay? We have also got some representatives at the back for you while you take your full ops. But please, one, no one person tries to walk the Prime Minister for half an hour. Let's get another person to put in here, right? He will be back again, and I assure you, he will be addressing you again. So I want to thank, before he gets up, he goes to the back, and if you want to do so, he has some more talent in the room. And therefore, I want to call the young lady from the Prime Minister's constituency at all to go off to Selo Shu to do a point for us and say, "That's you". Let's clap together for Miss Gina Bensel.
My name is Gina, I live from the southeast of Miko. Welcome, Livia. This poem is called "That You" by the President of Selo Shu. And I'm going to be going to party and
I need to ask you a question.
When you look into the mirror, who do you see? Who is this person that you call me? When you look at that, you're wondering, how do we see? Or is it too many layers to peel? Of kind of attitude that I